I think so. Oh, do I have the pen or I don't have it? Baby. Thank you. I know you're baby's asleep. John, hold it close by please. Thank you.
Okay, I call to order the Board of Trustees special meeting for October 24th, 2023, and the time is now six o'clock PM. Mr. Hanson, would you like to do the invocation for us today? I'm sorry. Or should I ask Tate?
Thank you, Lord, for our time together. Please bless each family represented here. Amen.
Please, Lord, be with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Mary.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Jeff just texted that he had a work emergency, but he just texted he should be here by 6:30.
Okay. Ms. McKee?
Here.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, once again, I requested only a single agenda item to be placed on here regarding safety for our residents and specifically their school child. Uh, it was for a bus turnaround at the end of the road. Uh, the engineer had specifically said we just had to approve the engineering request, and all I wanted was a five-minute discussion to say yes or no, to move forward, and that was not allowed. I put in the safety of our residents, uh, in jeopardy. I, I don't think it's serving, uh, the community well, and although we can't add this to the meeting because, again, it's a special meeting, which we shouldn't have, uh, except in emergencies, um, this needs to be on the next agenda to discuss because, again, it, it's about kids walking in the dark. They used to serve this room, but until the bus got stuck, they stopped. So, we, we need to address this.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Mr. Evans, uh, we didn't get any instructions from the engineer prior to the establishment of the agenda by Mrs. McKee. So, there, there was not anything that was able to be put on the agenda at the, at the time the agenda was established.
I, I sent this request on October 18th.
Yes, but we did not have the information from the engineer in order to put any kind of an item on the agenda by the time the agenda had been established.
The agenda wasn't released until, I think, three or later PM yesterday. So, there, there was plenty of time when I requested on Wednesday this to be added to the agenda. So, again, it, things need to be addressed, and especially with public safety. So, I look forward to having this on the next.
Yeah, and, and you know what? I'm, I'm hoping we'll have something from the county planning. We don't put things on the agenda till we're ready to have all the information. And it went to the county, because you wrote an email to the county, and have you not heard back from them?
Yes, and you got that copy too, where they said we have to approve the engineering request, and that's what I requested we deal with today.
We, we will have that on the next. We, we had to wait to hear back from them. Yes, we did. Yes, we did, Mr. Evans.
And then, you got that information well before the agenda was set out.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to, uh, the roll call, Ms. Mary.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
And Mr., uh, Ms. McKee?
Yes. So, we'll move on to adopt the minutes for October 3rd, 2023 meeting as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, again, I don't believe these minutes, uh, properly were right to the business of the board. They're, they're skewed, um, and that's all.
Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Now.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. So, that being said, um, that's, uh, we either can table it and just wait, make, wait till the next meeting and approve it.
Yeah, or not.
Yeah, so that's fine. That's fine. That'll come in off. Okay?
Do you want to bring the backup and Jeff fix it?
Yes, we can do that.
But the point of order is a special meeting. I don't think we can change the agenda.
Well, we're not changing the agenda.
The meeting, the minutes can't be approved.
Yeah, we just can't.
We'll have to either put them on the next meeting.
No, I'm talking about the, the public hearing that's stated to start at 6:05 PM. I don't think we can change the order.
And make a motion to recess until 6:30?
We can do that. We can recess up until 6:30. I'll make a motion to recess till 6:30?
What?
So, that we can allow Mr. Johnson to be here for the public hearing?
Mr. Johnson to be here by 6:30. You can either wait, or you can leave. It's up to you then.
So, do you want to? I'm concerned we're going to jeopardize the public hearing.
Roll call.
Well, we don't have a second on the motion to adjourn, but we don't, we, we don't have Mr. Johnson here to provide input.
So, we're going to adjourn.
Well, you could probably open a meeting, and then by the time he gets here, you're going to be through all this stuff that he would have read, the LCPC, John's opinion.
Okay, so we can go ahead and move over to the public hearing for the application submitted by the zoning commission.
Yeah, I think you can find. In 25 minutes, he should be here.
Okay. All right, let's do that then. I move to open a public hearing for the application submitted by the zoning commission, uh, for the text to the zoning resolution article, uh, number two, definition in Article 10, supplementary district, regulation, and the time is now 6:07. The legal notice for the Board of Trustees' public hearing was in the Patastika Standard on October 12th, 2023. The application was submitted to the Licking County Planning Commission for non-violent recommendation on September 8th, 2023. The Planning Commission Board met on September 25th, 2023, and the Licking County Planning Commission Board voted to provide a non-violent recommendation of the conditional approval. The zoning commission recommend, recommendation to the Board of Trustees is to approve the application and was received on October 3rd, 2023. John Singleton, would you like to present?
Yes, the, uh... Uh, in the package you have from the Staffordville from LCPC, uh, giving a non-violent recommendation of conditional approval for conditions, um... They recommended, uh, eliminating an additional, uh, sentence out of the line under research activities, which the zoning commission has amended before moving, making the recommendation to this board. Uh, they also recommended monitoring issue two in the November 7th election, uh, that may have, may or may not have effects on, uh, one of the new sections in the zoning resolution pertaining to medical marijuana, um, which, that may nullify that section or it may be something that remains as it is or may need to be amended at a later time. Then, if you go on back into the report, everything that is in green, uh, in the same packet from the Planning Commission, what was sub, submitted to them, green is new, uh, and the red is what was, uh, deleted from those recommendations or those, uh, items as it was sent to the prosecutor's office for review and also to the Planning Commission for review. Under definitions, uh, there's a new definition for decorative fence because it was never defined in our zoning resolution, although Article 10 does refer to decorative fences and limitations. Uh, festival, uh, the definition for festivals placed in here for special, under the, basically under special events, uh, which special events is also a new definition. Uh, glare was rewritten based on, uh, different issues and written in accordance with the prosecutor's recommendation, um, and the Planning Commission's recommendation. Definition for small solar facility and small wind farm were also added. And then, if you go on back to, uh, page 10-3, under 1005, under accessory structures, 1005-F, the additional height, schools were added in here to eight feet on fences. They were limited to six feet. Um, every time they wanted to do any kind of security fence and go to eight feet, they had to apply for a variance, so that was the reasoning behind that. Then, if you go to 10-4, under table 1005-B, um, under fence, where it says not permitted in front yard, uh, it added decorative fences. They've always been allowed in the front yard up to within one foot of the property line or road right away, but there was never a definition. So, now that's in, and then they also, we've also added in, uh, in for schools for security purposes. Uh, solar panels were taken out on down, if you see where it says red, and they were moved down. The solar panels you're talking about here is residential solar panels. So, that was moved down and created its own separate section across. They're not permitted in the front yard. They have an increase set back from the side and rear property lines. And on this one, uh, when you, when you see the final draft over here that was submitted, this says six feet, but that was changed to eight feet by the zoning commission, uh, based on a conditional use permit we had in the actual height that they are once they are installed. Uh, if you go back to page 10-6, there are several items that are in red. All of these were deleted, uh, based on the opinion from the prosecutor's office and from Licking County Planning Commission, as those all fall under the jurisdiction of other agencies. Uh, if you go down to section 10-18, uh, what was existing was deleted, but there is an entirely new section below it in green. This, this, this is the, the new, uh, section dealing with glare.
Oh, with glare, thanks. I missed that.
On 10, 10-7, uh, finishes up with the glare, and then there's four more sections that are deleted, um, because they fall under the jurisdiction of other agencies. Um, then, when you go back to section 10-8, uh, there's a new section at the bottom, and it says section 10-29 in this, but when you go over to the updated version, all these are being, will be renumbered due to the sections that have been deleted. Uh, that section deals with, uh, mobile food vendors, um, for special events, uh, which brings them in and makes them a, uh, an approved use for the schools, nonprofit organizations, schools or government agencies. Um, schools or government agencies were added because we initially started with nonprofits, but technically under the law, schools and, uh, government agencies are not nonprofit. So, we had, have them in also. Uh, and then, if you go to 10-9, uh, there's a section here under 10-20. It's numbered currently on this section, 10-30, uh, pursuant to the revised K-519.213, small solar facilities and small wind farms are prohibited in all zoning districts when they are within the unincorporated areas of that township. Um, and the small solar facilities and small wind farms, the definition of those are up in Article 2, which covers that. Um, and then, the last section that was added was a section that, uh, had been missed by the, in previous years, it needed to be added in in accordance with, uh, Resolution 1809, 1803, uh, dealing with medical marijuana in that township. That's the LCPC report. And then, if you go over to this, which is in your packets, this is the, the clean copy after all the changes are made, if this is what you approve with. Um, on page 10-1, at the bottom, uh, you see Article 2 at the bottom. That is the sentence that was recommended from LCPC in the prosecutor's office to be removed from research activities, um, because the provisions of sections 10-16 and 10-24 aren't even what was in the book now. That was from a previous version of the zoning resolution, and those, those just didn't exist. So, those were based on the recommendations that sentence was removed. Uh, the next page is the clean version of the definitions under solar, uh, facility, small solar facility, small wind farm, a special event. And if you have any questions, just stop me and ask while we're going. Then, when you get to, go to page 10-5, uh, if you go down to table 1005-B, this is where the zoning commission has made the change from six feet to eight feet on the, uh, height for the residential solar panels, which is a single site, single residential. This is for ground mounted, roof mounted are obviously on, uh, still permitted use, uh, for residential purposes. They're considered an accessory structure. And the rest of this is all as, as I've just explained on the other, uh, except that, you'll notice that the section numbers are changed to represent how everything currently lines up if this is approved in the resolution. You go to sections 10-11 and 10-12, and then 10-13 is glare, uh, 10-16 is block frontage, temporary dwellings, uh, 10-18, uh, and then, when you get down to licensed mobile food vendors, other than 10-29, it's 10-22. Uh, 10-23 is small solar facilities, small wind farms, and 10-24 deals with medical marijuana.
I do have a question on the section renumbering. Is that required? Because it could cause some confusion if people are used to section 10-23 dealing with required frontage or noise on this, and typically, when sections are deleted in code or anything, they're just deleted. All others remain.
And that these were all renumbered based on the recommendation from both prosecutor and Licking County Planning?
Those will be, those will, those will actually go in order once this is approved, so it'll go 13, 14.
And then, I did have a question on the solar panels. Are fencing in residential areas, uh, it's mentioned height of six foot. I would say that's why the previous height of six foot for the solar panels, if you're going to block them or whatever. Uh, is there any concern about raising the eight foot when the residential fencing is only six?
Well, there, there, there will be, as we move forward with the, um, review of the zoning resolution, Article 16 deals with buffering, which, at that point, we will need to add in some extra buffering around. Right now, if you look in the first column, solar panels are conditionally permitted use. So, if somebody wants to do ground mounted, so, single site, uh, solar panels, too many nesses, um, it has to be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and that can be added on a case-by-case basis now until Article 16 is, uh, updated to address that issue. Uh, my recommendation, when we get to that point, is going to be add, uh, evergreen trees or, or whatever kind of bush that doesn't lose their leaves around them, especially on anything that's going to be visible to neighboring residential properties, streets, or cause a glare for anybody.
Should we do that in conjunction with this so that people can't install it without their proper buffering that you say we need?
Well, again, under conditionally permitted use, that can be added in, and it's, it will be recommended to the BZA. They worked on this, these two sections from March until now to get this much done, and then we're moving on to other parts of it now, uh, but Article 16 does need work, and that does need to be addressed at that point.
Would the BZA have the authority now to, uh, require additional buffering as it is?
Yes, under the conditionally permitted use.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure that they're allowed to do that. And then, the other question I had was on the, uh, mobile food truck vendors. Uh, I know, uh, I've, I've talked to several, and there was concern about, uh, no provision for, uh, residential areas for special events, block parties, graduations, stuff like that. I know other, other townships do have those provisions, um, and, uh, was there any consideration given for that? Because I talked to a few members, and they said that wasn't discussed.
It, it wasn't discussed, but I'm, I believe HOAs are nonprofit organizations, uh, areas like that, that would cover them in those areas as far as a, uh, graduation party, something like that. I mean, that's just going to be something that, you know, they can have whatever kind of food they want to come in, but this is, this is dealing with just setting up to do business as far as this under special.
So, so you're saying for a, any individual person can order a food truck for a graduation or anything?
Basically, their catering is what I would consider.
Okay, because there are some communities, kind of associations that invite food trucks in, so that, that would be fine with that.
And this is, again, when, when this is done, and this is up to this board at this point, uh, you can approve this, deny it, or you can approve it with amended amendments. If it's something that you want to amend into this, you have the opportunity to do that at this point.
But I, I would be more apt to allow the food trucks, because during pandemic, we saw how a lot of people, that, that helped neighborhoods, it's, it's people together. A lot of neighborhoods don't have HOAs, and Springfield Township has some, I, I think some relevant, uh, relevant provisions on, on food trucks, uh, distances from houses and, and stuff like that that maybe we should look at, because, again, the vendors I'm speaking to, these, they're concerned that they're not going to be able to go into the residential areas for special events, and that, if it's not a, a, you know, nonprofit or government or school, because that's, that is a lot of their, their business.
And that is something that, again, can be amended at this point, if that's something that you want to add to it.
What would your name look like, or what would you say?
You would just make the motion to add whatever to that and be approved by this board?
Can it be sent back to the, um, Commission for Provisions before it's approved?
No, at this point, they, they, at this point, the, the Board of Trustees votes to approve this recommendation from, from the zoning commission, deny this, or approve it with their amendments.
I got it. Thanks. Thank you for that.
Now, does this, uh, do anything with the fee? Because right now, there's a $200 fee, permit fee for food trucks, or is that set?
There's been no fee set for this, so no, it, it would not fall under that. The $200 fee would, uh, for a mobile food vendor would be if they're operating in the areas that they are permitted to operate for profit, which are currently, uh, general business, M1, M2, M2, and, and M3 zoning districts. They would be required permits to operate in those areas, and that would be the fee for those permits or, yeah, yeah, for those permits, um...
For example?
As it's currently set up.
Yeah.
But for special events, there is no fee that has been added to those unless this board decides to do that next time they revise the fee schedule.
Okay, so this is a replay, that's going to stay in place, and this is in addition to it?
Yes.
Because the way this reads, it says, "Mobile food vendors operating in that township are only allowed to operate at special events or festivals." So, I would think that would supersede based on that language, no?
Well, if you go to the last line that says exception, MFBs operating in GB or M1, M2, M3s.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Some ones that operate like at Amazon, they pull up, they, they still pay that fee.
They still have to have that permit, yes.
And those in ones in two.
Yes.
And there's other requirements. They have to have their health department.
Mm-hmm. Inspection, car, license and stuff.
What would you be, your recommendation as far as approving any kind of changes to it, do it at this time? Would it be better to do it another time since we don't have really language or have the public hearing and then decide it at the, at the next meeting?
Um, I mean, what, what you can do is, uh, rather than, oh, actually, I don't think it has to be done during the public hearing. Could be during the discussion. So, once the public hearing is closed, you have 20 days where you recess public hearing to another meeting. So once the public hearing is closed, you have twenty days, or you recess public hearing to another meeting, to another night. Continue with that, like, and we can get language worked up between now and then with prosecutor's office.
I'd like, after hearing what the public says, but definitely, I hear, get the input from the food truck vendors. Cause they deal with these kind of situations that. Especially with, I think, if we're putting in changes for special events and festivals, I would think that would
This would be a time to do it.
Require, it's gonna be in a resident, possibly residential area. And if they're not nonprofit, not, you would need some other kind of allowance to have that, correct?
Yes.
Any public comments in regards to this county committee? Come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Gary Burkhart, two five four Trail East. I'm glad to see that we've incorporated some exclusion or prohibition relative to the community size solar. But I realize that zoning cannot deal with the industrial solar. And that has to be done at the county commissioner level as far as exclusionary. So, as I've stated in the past, I'm still very supportive of the Etna Township board trustees passing a resolution requesting that the Etna Town, or that the county commissioners declare Etna Township as an exclusionary zone as it pertains to industrial size of solar. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Doris Sarah Schumek, ninety one thirty six Main Street, Etna. And I thought that now would be a perfect time to address this one resolution as well, which I've been advocating for, for the past five years with the Etna Township. And it's section ten fifteen. So I see we have ten five, ten, ten four, ten seven, ten eight, ten nine, ten sixteen, ten eighteen. Ten fifteen is one that I've been, that I've brought up, as I mentioned, for over five years. And that is regarding noise. And the existing language for that is one that can be misinterpreted. So I had suggested changing the language. And since so many other of the resolutions in this section are being changed, deleted. I thought that this would be the perfect time to throw this out again, see if, if that can be done as well. The existing language for section ten fifteen noise says, "No objectionable noise that constitutes a nuisance that is audible due to volume, frequency, beat, and/or duration beyond the lot of the noise source shall be muffled or otherwise controlled. Weather sirens and related apparatuses used solely for public safety in addition to passing motor vehicles, utilizing public roadways, construction equipment, lot equipment, agriculture equipment, and pets are exempt." So that's the way that it reads, and that it's read for over five years. And the proposed language that I have, because our township is growing, becoming more dense. We have more people coming into our neighborhood. Bad neighbors as well, creating a lot of noise. Workers and warehouses and so forth, working at odd hours. So what I propose to change is, "No objectionable noise that constitutes a nuisance that is audible due to volume, frequency, and/or duration to a reasonable person, when heard beyond the lot of the noise source, shall be permitted between the hours of nine P M and six A M, unless muffled or otherwise controlled. Weather sirens and related warning devices used solely for public safety. Construction equipment, lot equipment, agriculture equipment, and pets are exempt. Temporary construction activity between seven A M and seven P M." So I tried to keep it very basic, it was just my suggestion. Since for many years, over five years, I've been trying to work with the township. And to no avail, has there been any consideration for a modification changing so that this can be interpreted as clear to everybody who reads the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Perkins, seven three five two, Homeroe. As someone who spends time in their non-professional field writing rules and enforcing set of rules. One of the things I discourage is producing rules that are unenforceable. So that's one general consideration that I encourage you to take into account, is whenever you're writing the section rules that, that they are actually enforceable. Otherwise, they have their teeth, and you don't really get anywhere with them anyway. That being said, there's oftentimes when we can write rules that actually create problems rather than resolve them. Where they can be resolved through other means that are on less, a lot less scale. That, that allow the minority that are presenting a problem to be addressed rather than punishing the majority who are not in most situations. You know, there are things that, you know, in general, I, I tend to follow the Jeffersonian, Jeffersonian model of that, that which governs, least usually governs best. There are certainly some things where you do need to have rules in place. But my background in motorsports has taught me, you better be able to enforce them, because if you can't force them, they're not worth the paper they're written on, and they in fact cause a lot, lot more problems than they cure. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public comments tonight, those?
We still on the agenda or?
We're still on this.
We're at the public hearing for zoning changes. Not the general public comments, is how much.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Your fair part. So any other comments? So we can move on and see what the pleasure of the board is?
Do we have to close the public comments?
No, Mr. Adams, we don't.
She's checking, see how close she gets.
You do have quorum.
Once you want, once you get to the point where, where you're ready to close the public hearing. You can close it, and then you discuss everything amongst yourselves. You can recess, well, even the discussion, we can, you can, like, you have twenty days from the date that you close the hearing. To, to do the final vote on this. So in that timeframe, when you're doing your discussion, is when we can get the other language, if you want the other language, and whatever added into it. Whatever you would like to see. But we can do that, and bring it back to the next.
And I do have another question on the schedule, but we could do that during discussion.
I guess.
So I would think that we would.
So we can go into a recess now if we wanted to? I don't know how far Jeff is.
But if you, if you recess the hearing, recess until?
For that next.
Till the next meeting, or you can close the hearing and go into discussion.
I think all we're dealing with is public comments.
Yeah, well, I mean, after the public comments, yes.
Then close the public hearing, after the comments, when you close the public hearing, but then recess it? Is that the?
Well, no, you, if you, if you close it, you don't, but if you're gonna recess public hearing.
Oh.
You would open back up to continue the public hearing. At continuation of the meeting.
Okay.
But your timeline for your final vote doesn't start until you close the public hearing for the twenty days.
Okay. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna submit stuff into the prosecutor's office, you're probably gonna be better off to recess it, because you might wanna have discussion on what he said. That's really good, do you guys? Once you close the public hearing, you have no more public testimony, and that's what starts your timeframe of talking for twenty days.
Correct.
But don't we have to close the public comments?
Yeah, you, once you close the public hearing, you have to act.
You can just recess the hearing until the next, whatever date you set for the continuation of.
I'm just confused, cause we have, we have a majority here. We've proceeded with meetings when I'm not here.
This doesn't have, this doesn't have anything to do with Jeff, this is the procedure for a hard advice code. Once you close the public hearing, you as a board have to act on it, per hard advice code in twenty days.
Within twenty days.
Within twenty days.
So since you want additional language proposed that we need to take to the prosecutor's office, there may need to be a longer window in order to do that, rather than just the twenty days. So rather than end the hearing and take a recess, it's better to recess first, so that it gives a longer window to give comment from the prosecutor's office with the additional language that you're suggesting.
I understand, but I'm just talking about public comments. And we need to stop and those, and to move on.
Right.
To recess to the rule.
That part doesn't have anything to do with the public comments. Once you close this public hearing, then you start the other timeframe on it. Hey Jeff, how are you?
If you, if you just, if you recess it and you make changes, then you can open back up to public comments at the next continuation on what changes that you made at that point. That's at your, that's at the board's pleasure.
Yeah.
So you can either close or recess. The difference is, is you start at twenty days to when you have to make that final decision.
I move that we recess this to add the additional language. So you're out now. Next meeting, within that timeframe.
Um, you need a second. I want you to second, and then you just walk through.
Does he have to roll call the food truck here or?
For the record, he arrived at six thirty nine. Uh, Mr. Johnson? I hear?
Here. Sorry, we have power outage downtown, it's a very disturbed neighborhood. State Farm Data Center down there, so it's back up.
So we can continue to discuss it, and what you, Mark wants to build up today, what we, what we're in.
You have a motion that needs to be discussed.
Get it up second first.
Okay, I will get the second up for discussion.
So the motion was to recess, we were talking about the mobile food truck vendors. How there's no provision to allow in residential areas outside of nonprofits, small that. Graduations, there's the definition change for the special events, which could be held in the neighborhoods, and if they want a food truck, as it's currently written, it would be prohibited. So I've talked to several food truck vendors, looked at other municipalities, other townships, and they do allow for residential with some qualifications. And I think that we should add that to the language. And Mr. Singleton indicated that we could recess, work on that language, bring it back next meeting, and then have a discussion and vote.
Yep. Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Miss McPhee?
Yes.
Okay, for the record, recessed at six forty nine, six forty nine. Now you just move on. All right. Sir, would you like to stand up to the first speaking or public comments? Please, first or last thing, your address for the record.
Eric Rager. Address is one zero four six zero E Road. I guess I'm just addressing a concern, I know Mike brought it, or Mark brought it up earlier. I'm the resident that
Yeah.
I'm trying to get the bus to come back down my road.
Yeah, let me just stop you right there, because I don't want us to be out of right now, we don't have it on the agenda, and we explain to you why we didn't have it on there. We can't discuss it, we are in a special meeting right now.
Unless you wanna discuss it not being on the agenda, because the agenda is a topic.
No, that's not true. It's not, we're not, it's, it's, just, we, just a special meeting today, sir. So that's the only reason why, we're not saying we can't discuss it in the future of our next meeting. But right now, it can't be on this, because we've already put our agenda together.
So I guess I just go back to the next one, and just bring it up?
Yes, we have it on there.
Twenty four, okay.
We're not against it, but yeah, thank you.
Judy Kathmeyer, twenty nine Roman Court. It would be most helpful, especially in a special session, to give a brief description of the proposed business items. For example, I have no idea what A M H easement, broils, two project means. And O P W C for Cumberland Crossing is another word salad meaning and description. This is a public meeting, I assume that the purpose is to keep the public informed. A simple definition attached to the agenda item would be most helpful. Speaking of definitions, according to the two thousand twenty three handbook for Ohio sunshine laws, a special meeting has three requirements, time, place, and purpose. I do not see a stated purpose for this particular meeting, except for it being a regular meeting masquerading as a special meeting. The handbook even addresses this issue. It's, this information is found on page one twenty seven. When a special meeting is simply a rescheduled regular meeting occurring at a different time, the statement of the meeting's purpose may be for general purposes. Discussing matters at a special meeting that were not disclosed in the notice of purpose, which we don't have one tonight, either in open session or executive session, is a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And I have extra copies if you would like one.
Steve Perkins, seven three five two, Homeroe. Just wanted to bring up that the whole last topic could have been handled under a postponement to the time certain derogatory rules, which is, can be found in the index in the back, thank you.
Gary Burkhart, two five four, Trail East. Both as a candidate for Etna Township trustee and as a resident, I wanna make some comments regarding the draft minutes which are on the agenda tonight. I do have to take exception, trusting the key to the comments you made under trustee comments.
They weren't approved, Mr.
At the last.
These aren't approved.
It doesn't matter, they're draft, they're draft minutes. They're draft minutes, and they are a public record by law. They are a public record by law.
We didn't get them approved.
Doesn't matter if they're not approved.
We did not approve them.
Doesn't matter, they're on the agenda.
But it's just for the record, they haven't been approved.
That's right, they're draft ones. So maybe you wanna correct what you said, because what you said at that last meeting, you've accused me of misrepresenting myself as an employee of the town unit. I have not done that. You also made a statement that I work for Mark Evans. Would you let me finish? Would you let me finish? Would you let me finish?
Work can't finish, but I'm gonna respond.
Give me my three minutes, and then you can respond. So anyway, I do not work for Mark Evans. For the last two years, I have volunteered to help residents in this community. The only people I've worked for are the residents of this community. Now, I wanna clarify something. I have worked with Mr. Evans. I've worked with our fiscal officer. I've worked with Laura Brown to get public records. I've worked with the enhancement. I've worked with Mr. Singleton when we have residents that have had questions here. I've worked with the county commissioners. I've worked with a variety of individuals to assist them as a volunteer. And I want that in the record, so that it's very clear. But the question I have for you, trustee. trustee McKee, and I said it publicly, that I will work with you as a resident. And if I'm elected as a trustee, my question is, will you work with me as a resident? And that's the question I have for you. And then I'll, I'll move to let you respond to that. Thank you.
You're welcome. I work with all residents. I don't treat anybody different. I work with all residents. Including you. So, like you mentioned, all the people you work with here, have you worked with me? Have you worked with me, Mr. Berkeley, as the president of this board? Have you, excuse me, I'm asking you the question.
Well, you want me to answer?
Yeah, please. I would love to hear that. Would you work with me? And have you worked with me in this last year and a half? That's a yes or no?
I've attempted to in many respects, but you won't respond to me.
I've never gotten anything from you, Mr.
I've tried, I've asked that things be on the.
Can you, no, no, not put stuff on the agenda. You've never worked with me. Of all the people here on this board, me, you've never worked with me.
Have you ever contacted me?
I have no reason to contact you.
Okay, thank you.
So, did you have any reason to contact me?
Point of order.
So I'm going to make it clear about you, we got the email from Mr. Evans stating that he hired a cashier as unpaid consultant. It's not something I made up. It's a fact. There's an email to prove it. So that's why. Okay, that's why I made that clear, and that's why the letter went out from our legal team stating, excuse me, excuse me, didn't say volunteer, just said unpaid consultant. And you have represented yourself at different locations, saying that you were there on behalf of the township.
Point of order, this is public comments. This is in trustee comments.
Excuse me, Mr. Evans, I'm talking. You listen to me.
This is in public, this is in trustee comments.
But he asked me to respond, and I'm responding. And I'm being respectful. I need you to do the same thing. So, yes, there was a letter that went out to us, and we have the email to prove it, okay? So that's why that was said. Thank you. So if anybody wants the email, it's, it's public. Is there any other public comments? So there you are. Is there any other public comments before we move on? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on over to our administrator, Ms. Nina Hanson, to do our report today.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that, um, please?
That'd be wonderful.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees, and it's good to have you all here. We're just one wing away from our election. The polls will be open at six thirty a.m. until seven thirty p.m.
Excuse me.
Early in-person voting continues through Sunday.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Our administrator, she's speaking. You're very rude. You need to stop. Thank you. I just ask you to please, 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 please stop. Please stop. Okay, Mrs. Hanson, please.
Uh, early in-person voting can, will continue through Sunday. Absentee voting by mail must be postmarked by Monday, November sixth. But the polls for in-person voting on Tuesday will be open from six thirty a.m. to seven thirty p.m. The advocate will be gathering candidate questionnaires for the trustee candidates and the selfless looking school board candidates. Those questionnaires should be published sometime this week. Um, I brought to your attention a number of matters on behalf of our road crew. We need service on the molar max to address the fact that two of the tires have worn more quickly than the other two. As I understand it, there's some kind of a, a way that the molar max can move that is out of alignment. It's not, it's not functioning properly. Um, we have a quote from ATN for one thousand four hundred seventy-one dollars, and I'm requesting approval for this expenditure. There's a motion.
Yep.
I move to prove your special need for the molar max.
Thank you.
Do you have a second? I'll second. Discussion?
Are we proving the exact amount of fourteen seventy-one ninety-seven, or do we need a little leeway in that?
No, I would, um, I think we should approve the amount of the quote.
You have a quote, you get what the quote is. You don't have to know. You go by the quote. That's why you get a quote.
But many times though, additional items are found during repairs.
Again, we go by the quote.
Local, Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
A light pole was damaged at Taylor and Palmer roads. Jess Howard has supplied a quote for replacement in the amount of three thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. We expect to receive reimbursement from the Ant Salt Drive Insurance Company. I'm requesting approval for this expenditure.
Motion to wait for that light replacement of Jess Howard after copying for the amount of three thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars.
I'll second.
Special.
Are these, uh, reimbursements, are, are we tracking them? Because I know there's been quite a few light poles hit. Are we being reimbursed for all of them?
Yeah, Bubba's taking care of, uh, track a bit, he was in working with the insurance companies.
So have all the past ones been paid or?
I don't know the answer to that as I stand here. I can't find that out. It's, I know it's something that Bubba tracks and takes care of.
Rock off, please, Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
The traffic device controller at Taylor and Palmer needs to be replaced. That's the device that controls when the light switches to red, green, yellow. Jess Howard has supplied a quote for replacement in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars. Requesting approval. That is for both the park and the labor. Um, I am requesting approval for this expenditure.
Make a motion for the proof for the Jess Howard traffic device controller for the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Is this, is this a failing part or is this just needs replaced because, uh, was it damaged or was it just? It, it just been almost first time we heard it replaced it, so I mean, it's, it's a fear that runs a lot. Right, is it, so it wasn't damaged anyway, it just failed? No, it's inside the box. It's just kind of a little bit of a.
Thank you.
Sure.
Local through, Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
There was some discussion in our last meeting about Venture Drive. You each have now received the notice of the filing of the petition to have the remainder of Venture Drive dedicated to the township. The site visit is scheduled for November ninth, and the hearing is scheduled for November sixteen. We don't need any action on that at this time. That's all right?
Thank you.
I have comments on some stuff later in the agenda, but in terms of my report, that's all, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the new business. Um, the AMH East Memorial's product, two project. Is a gentleman here from there? Let, come and follow me. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Randy Robert, Director of Land Development for AMH Development. Um, we, I have, uh, Royals Farm, if you're familiar with. We're in the process of, uh, getting engineering land assigned, uh, and John Singleton has those ready to sign. Uh, he requested an easement, um. We have a, the main pond is here. Um, sheet flows to the south, and we're requesting an easement on the twenty acre park property that the township owns. Um, I've got pictures. I can explain how it works. Uh, essentially, it's, it's an overflow that is, uh, higher than the hundred year flood. So the frequency that you'll see any water flowing over here is like maybe never. It's going to have, um, concrete. Uh, it's called Fleximatt. It's basically kind of a softball shaped concrete blobs that are, uh, incorporated in, uh, fabric. It's going to be, um, let's see. It's going to be forty feet wide and two hundred and ten feet from the top of the berm down. Uh, after nine months or so, vegetation starts going, starts to, uh, grow through it. And so you really don't see it. So you start with, um, the concrete, and then you have that. It's got, um, it's going to have an eight foot wide asphalt path on the top. It's going to have a little dip down about two feet. Um, and then, and that's the overflow. But, um, what else can I explain? Uh, it's going to also have a fifteen inch pipe that goes, parallel with it. Here's the piece, fifteen inch pipe here with large riprap at the bottom of it. So the whole flow from the pond forever is through the pipe. And if a, a second hundred year flood happens, days later after the first hundred year flood, you might see some water spill over it, so. Um, that was requested all by the county, and, uh, for that's what we're here to have you grant us.
Do you have copies of that, sir? Would you, would you give us all?
We kind of only have.
Absolutely. Question. So I just want to clarify, I think that you stated that Mr. Singleton had requested the easement, but the plan proposed that this be built on our park property, and so the only way for that to happen is for you to ask for an easement. I just, I just want to clarify that.
Okay. I kind of only have one copy or.
I have mine. Yes.
And this is the easement document. I don't know whether you've all read, but, uh, it grants us, uh, permission on your property to do any maintenance that needs to be done on it, vice versa. If you feel like you need to do some emergency maintenance, uh, you're allowed to do, uh, even undermine what we built if you need to, and then we'll have to put it back. So it's basically just a run of this concrete padding. It's erosion control. It's ODOT approved. And, uh,
I did have a question. Is there a reason that you're not just dealing with the water on your property? Because typically, developments, that's what they do. If this was a adjacent commercial property, I don't see that being asked or, or granted. Is there a reason that you can't modify your, uh, retention or detention pond to accommodate this?
This all sheet flows onto the twenty acres and probably a hundred feet beyond the outlet where the slope bank comes down, about a hundred feet is the, the main, uh, water course that goes east west. And, um, so that's where all this water sheet flows forever to there. And I believe we, uh, needed the twenty acres to the township. And so there's the outlet of water flow, it has to go somewhere eventually to a lower spot, and that's the low spot, so. There wasn't any other way to get to that creek if it's on the park, uh, to go south.
You, you couldn't take finger, pipes, fingers, and direct it into a retention pond in the center?
That's what we do. The whole, the whole, uh, development, which has stormed, stormed in the rear yards and in the roadways, they all go to that one pond, and then from there, it outlets in a fifteen inch pipe.
I'm just wondering why the pond couldn't be modified to accept more water so that this isn't needed? To meet those occasional hundred year floods or? I mean, is this, this is the only recourse or are there other options?
I believe it is. I mean, it's, it's, we had to go through the whole, uh, you know, three or four county reviews, engineers. Um, somebody came up with all the calculations on how wide and how long it is. So, yeah, I, this, I mean, the, the eventual outlet is, is a stream, you know, on the park there, so. But I, I, I think if, from the long run, you're not going to see anything there other than a spot of concrete riprap essentially at the end of a pipe. That pipe is buried in the tip, so you just see the riprap. And then this, uh, concrete matting will have vegetation growing up through it, and you won't even see that. So essentially, you're seeing a bunch of rock on the hillside.
Mr. Evans?
Does that make any sense?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I've been, I was just trying to wait for an opportunity. Um, we spoke with Soil and Water, and they, emergence, they're, they will be required to have emergency spillway. It does not have to be on our property. It will require them to redesign their existing plan to put it on one of their other available lots. This is probably the, perhaps the easiest, um, way for the emergency spillway to be designed, but it is not the only way for the emergency spillway to be designed.
Okay, and that's what I, I figured, that, that's my concern of if we're, we don't have a park design yet. We don't know how we're going to use this. There's a pond adjacent to this, and we don't know how residents are going to use that. So my concern would be granting me the easement when there are possibly other options, and it doesn't sound like that was explored. It was, this is what was kind of moved forward of, hey, this is the easiest. But I'm a little hesitant with it being public land, that it should be the easiest for the developer. I mean, we should make it hard for you, but if there is an opportunity that you can modify your plan, what is, is it just a cost issue or?
I've never heard that that was a possibility, so I, um, I don't, I don't know that.
That's just what I'm told.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you also have the Soil and Water, and there's, there's the engineering department and et cetera. So there are only one agency out of like six that review all these plans. And I can tell you, they've gone around and around with comments and reengineering, and so that's kind of where I think it's, it is personally.
It just, to me, it seems like this was the solution picked, and every, all the engineering team affect that was done, which is needed, but I would have liked to see what are the other options, especially when you're asking for use of public land. And we've already granted one easement to, I think it was AEPs. Uh, there's another development that has their water retention, the, uh, drain hall on our property. I mean, I, I, I think we've got to be good stewards of our funds and land. I mean, we, we did spend quite a bit of money on this land, so that would be my concern, especially if there's some confusion about if there's options or not. So I would like to see, is there options?
Right.
One other, um, issue that I can address and I do concern yours about is the, um, the long-term maintenance of, of all of the, um, wastewater, not wastewater, but the
Stormwater.
Stormwater, thank you. The stormwater management, including this emergency spillway, is that the long-term, um, maintenance will be part of the county petition ditch program. And the cost of that maintenance will be assessed as property tax. So the township is never going to have, uh, any kind of, um, a maintenance cost associated with either this emergency spillway or certainly with any of their stormwater management. So I just point that out as an issue that might have been a concern.
So I, I guess if you look at the, this Royals farm, the very first one, if you look at the layout, I, I don't want to, you know, it's, um,
actually, is this one right here?
Yeah, that one is. You can see the layout, where the pond lays.
Also, this is this one, right?
This particular one, yeah, has the, shows the outlet, the, the, you know, the stream bed. And so, I mean, it's, you're going to have a spillway. You know, even if you took all this cul-de-sac, you're still going to have a spillway that ends up going into the park. Because it's, it's got to get to the creek. So, um, it's just forever gone to the south, to the creek. And so that's kind of where I. And so that's kinda where I was actually here at that one. I believe, I don't think it's a matter of like using up logs, you still have to get to the creek. That makes some sense.
Am I correct that this, this land was not donated to the township? The township purchased this land? I, I thought I was correct on that, I'm sure.
Water flows this way, correct?
Yes.
Creek flows this way, so you're coming back against the...
That's north. Jeff, north is this way.
Well, it's like that, but you're, like, what is that? You're coming out here, but the creek's going that way, so you're coming back this way.
So here's a picture, this, that way. That's a little clearer. Just showing the monitor maps. Because if you look at this map, Jeff, this map shows the portion of this, so that is north.
Yeah, I was looking at this end now here. My, that's my, I was looking at why wouldn't it come? There's already natural ditch here, why wouldn't it come into here? Like, there's flow right here in these, you know, so like, like that. It's like, what I'm pointing at here is, is the natural flow is this direction, right? So why wouldn't you come out like this and flow this way, like that?
Because the pond, pond is here, it's, it's, this is an expansion of the existing pond.
Right.
I mean, in the water, but, you know, the lay of the land kinda got to this pond here.
Right.
All this old pipe, um, there and...
But you're running on all the water over here, right? Because you're talking about coming out here, I'm saying, why aren't you coming out here? And follow this way into the creek, right?
The priority is that we don't have one, one, you know, it's pipe coming out. The spillway again will never be used, unfortunately.
Well, hopefully, cross my fingers, right?
It's not like you're, we, you know, maybe what they never could use, but...
Not if you're gonna follow, natural flow on that.
Looks like this was, that ditch was in the creek back there.
I think this was, uh, well, it was, uh, salt fence or something.
I think that's, is that what they, I was getting at, that was, you know, this actually had this issue, I was like, what?
I think somebody marked this, you know, protect this buffer from here, from a certain distance, and, and then this, it, well, this, uh, buffer up.
I have to go look at it, that's all I can say, I have to go look at it next time.
Here's the flood plain that's going through. That's where the water recited, the flood plain. Would it, would it make more sense to put a pipe into a park pond and then some flow out of that? Or? It just seems to be we're, we're blocking out the section.
Oh, I thought that was actually, I thought that was actually a slowdown.
There's some setting on there, I'm not gonna show you elevations, I'm not sure how to do it.
Right, but I'm looking at that, for the natural flow of water, or the, the water's going... I'm saying, it's trying to come this way, the water's going that way, so why would you get upstream? No, that's what I'm trying to figure out, why wouldn't it downstream?
I think it's just, I think it's, that's why I thought this was here, I was thinking, I could, I said, I could... Yeah, this, this would be more important.
Mr. Singleton, what's your view on having them just press it on their property? Uh, you seen anything about that or?
The, the answer when we spoke to Soil and Water today was if this would be denied, then they would have to figure it out, re-engineer it to some other way.
I'm just concerned we're doing this for the convenience of the developer, which we should help develop and not, yes, if I, when we're using our park property, I'm concerned.
I'd like to see where this is now, I don't agree, you know, since also we have an armory, probably we have hours I can see that creating problems and some, it's a costly fix, hours from the place to come.
Well, I think that there's gonna be, I mean, I, I can't imagine that the park design will go into the, you know, that more into here.
Well, we got a pond to the, we have a pond right here. So you're talking about taking that area to the east of it, and our pond is constrained by your housing over here, so we're only left with really two sides for access, and that may take that. That's, that's one of my concerns, because we don't know how we're gonna design it.
Yeah, we might, we won't change the slope of that, you know, up there.
I'm just worried about if it's an open area for it, you have a pipe, riprap, kids running, people who were talking about this all, I, I think we're in preliminary safety there. What kind of timeframe do you have? Probably as soon as possible, you want us...
The whole, the whole thing is mixed up a little bit, this whole development with the four million dollar station that's constructed, that, and they're also dying, three tents soon over here. If we could get this land signed, strike sewer floor, that puts us on time, if not, probably, you know, nine months to a year, redesigning all that, and the layout going in with the final development plan.
Does the sewer have anything to do with the drainage though?
No, but it's the plan, so we can't, can't start to develop any development work, can't turn any dirt unless the plan gets signed.
Well, the lift station, sorry. This, this development's in two phases, this is phase two. They haven't begun phase one yet.
Right. And phase one is really the phase that is around the area where the lift station is. This is phase two.
So this one, right, whole...
Phase one hasn't even started yet.
Wait, what do you mean by that? It's, it's ready to be paved, there's curves in place, um...
But you haven't, what I'm saying is, you made some reference to the lift station as regards to this phase, and the lift station is part of phase one, this is phase two.
Yeah, so what we have is, we're probably seventy-five percent done with the lift station. Um, sewer is down to, uh, this one, I'm right here, the sewer now is here. Right or wrong, I can pull a whole lot of people, so I can get sewer to that stuff over here.
Because they wanna do it.
Yeah, because they wanna run it all the way down here.
Right, to shape it to...
So, I mean, it's our, a whole lot, a whole lot I wanna have to do. This just has to get redesigned for that stuff.
Do, I, I'm separate thing, Lucy, do you know when that is gonna be open? I know it's...
If, if you're talking about the roadway, I think we're still, uh, we should...
December?
Yeah, mid-December, I think, the road lighting part will happen next year.
I was just curious.
It's real well placed.
I, I'm just concerned that it's easy for the developer when there might be another option that they handle it on their property.
So what you're planning, you think it's just something to maintain? Or is it just, I mean, I don't think you even have to mow it. This, this thing, that, that's probably been in place for like nine or twelve.
Where's this at?
That is in Pickleton, a place called Estates of Lake Forest. It's on the Polla, Polla Drive. It's in our new development in there, it's called Estates of Lake Forest. Come up north on Refugee Road. You are west of Pickleton North High School, it's the Sycamore Church. From that area, built that road, I can't remember the name, but it eventually turns over to Polla Drive.
And so Polla Drive is out here and this is behind?
Yeah. Polla, as you can see, if you come up north and you see our entrance, the monument on the left. Uh, there's a little bridge, there's a rail up here, and then, and then there's blocks here. This thing is behind, probably the first light on. And then there's another pond also, and that's yourself, this is the one that's the actual.
I can't see how it doesn't need to be maintained, mowed, something, because it's gonna be love to grow. You're gonna have weeds, you're gonna have.
No. Well, the hillside right now is highland, it's, 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 it's a sort of hesitation. I don't know if that's the way you want, just the natural look.
Mr. Evans, just to address your timing issue. So, a couple of weeks ago, when it became evident that the requirement was gonna be for an easement that AMH was gonna ask for, um, they proposed through their legal counsel, language for the easement, that I began working with the prosecutor's office. That became a negotiation back and forth as to the actual language of the easement, to where it was in a form that would be legally acceptable, should the board determine whether or not to grant the easement. It was at that time that I gave it to you and said, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm giving you this proposal that has been given to us by AMH that is now legally acceptable and is legally acceptable for you to sign.
So it's not allowed space to make this fall off, assuming that other ones?
I know what you're talking about, I've seen them before, yeah. I just don't know if it's appropriate for a park. Uh, 'cause the land behind here, this is just open land, right? It's not really a park, it's not really a use of space here.
It's, you know, it all slopes down to that creek, and I, I don't know, um, whether anybody's gonna wanna try to cross the creek and just use that little sliver between the top of this pond and the creek there. It's, it's, it's.
Has that land been farmed, been harvested than that, is it open?
Um, no, it's, it's all weeds, it's, yeah.
But to get to it, does it?
Pretty clear, pretty clear. I just feel like I'm walking, looking at the person.
Alright, alright.
I think you can go right here and get back to it. So what do you have before?
I think I'd like to move to postpone this until later date. So give us time to research and look at options, and maybe talk, let's hand some talk to the developer, possible other options. So use our, our land, look if it's needed.
What amount of time for you to think?
Yeah, the motion on the board, I should restate. You moved to postpone.
Oh, sorry.
Roll call is ready.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we get your contact information before you leave? Just have your questions? I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-three, ten, twenty-four, zero, one. Authorized myself, crossing the key to prepare an intimate and application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute the contract as required and fiscal officer Julie, uh, Julie Marion to sign the chief fiscal officer's certificate, certification, sorry, of a local fund loan repayment of one hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, please?
I do have a question. We, we had the prior in two thousand twenty-one, um, OPWC that wasn't pursued, um, dealing with, uh, Etna proper. And I know last year when we were talking about, or I think it was, yeah, it was last year, uh, to OPWC, it was the comment on board to, we, we don't wanna do it, we wanna add more things together, it seems like we have less now. Is there a reason why Etna proper, which was gonna be moved forward two years ago, isn't a part of this? And then my other question is, the prior policy of the board was that the amounts that were gonna be requested be stated before any authorization or approval be given. This seems like a, a change from that, is there a reason for that? Why, why the full, full information wasn't provided to the board?
Miss McKee?
Yes, please.
So, I think if you recall, a couple of months ago, when we were first talking about getting approval for the engineer to give us the information that we needed for OPWC, we addressed Etna proper. And we talked at that time about with the Pike Street, um, project that'll be ongoing, that having Etna proper done, once the Pike Street project is completed, it makes more sense. And at that time, the discussion was to submit an OPWC request for, um, for these, this particular neighborhood. The, we have the engineers estimate, the amount that is in the resolution is designed to be a twenty-six percent, um, contribution by the township, based on the hundred percent number that the, um, engineer gave us, because a twenty-six seventy-four, um, request gives us more points. So that hopefully this will be a more acceptable application.
You state that as in the resolution, can you point to what section or where that twenty-six percent is?
I, I don't know that the figure twenty-six percent is included in the resolution. The amount of money is included in the resolution.
Which is the one hundred and ninety-four hundred forty, eighty-four dollars.
Whereas I don't think it has to be on the resolution.
Where, there's.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see, I apologize, Mr. Evans, it's not on the resolution itself, it's on the fiscal officer's certification of the available, which is also in the packet.
Okay, that didn't state any percentage or anything.
Ready for a roll call? Mr. Evans?
I'm gonna discuss. I mean, again, I just think that the amount requested is low compared to other projects. We could have probably added other areas to this.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Roll call is ready.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
I moved to post the Etna Community Park Survey questions on the township website, send to the list serve and request wind waste to include in the next bill, which, we know their bill only runs in December, so they would put separate.
Well, she had, she called it, so you might wanna discuss any information, because she called.
So let's, yeah, let's.
Do you wanna discuss it before you make your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so in, in terms of, so the thought process behind asking wind waste to mail this for the township is number one, it is a public service that they've offered to the township. And number two, it would give us a method to communicate with a, another part of our residential population that perhaps is not connected with us, either electronically through our list serve or watching our website. So, it would, the thought process was it would give us a whole nother group. In talking with wind waste about specifically having it mailed with the bill, the next billing cycle is not, will not be mailed until the end of November, but wind waste may, um, is, is considering just making a special mailing for us at no cost to the township. Um, I don't have their answer back yet on that, but, um, they, they seemed that they would be open to that. So, um, you might wanna just alter your motion to stay in a separate mailing from wind waste, which they would deal without cost. Yeah, without cost to the township.
Now, just for a clarification, the, the mailings, the two mailings a year are part of their contract.
Correct.
So, that is part, and the only thing I would ask is that this not be used for any promotion, no trustees' names on it, because it's been abused previously.
You were given the three pages.
Yep, that's it.
The survey was developed, um, in cooperation with our engineer and the park committee.
Was, this wasn't emailed previously, was it? Was this?
I know the answer to that.
I know typically their mailing is called a two-page, aren't they? Is there a problem with it being three-page?
Well, this would.
Or are you just directing them to it?
I'm sorry?
You're just directing them to this? You're not including this in the mailing, are you?
No, this will be included in the mailing. So this is two pages.
Does it say how to return it?
It's fine and back.
Does it say how to return it, or where to return it?
It doesn't say anything.
Well, that's a point, and maybe we should, for the ones that are, oh, no, please, if you, if, please fill out and return it to Etna Township. It doesn't have, like, by a date certain, so maybe that would be an extra thing to include.
And if they're gonna mail us, shouldn't have our P O box on there?
Sure.
Isn't that the proper way for it to receive?
Yeah, that's where it should go, to our P O box.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That's why I asked if these be provided prior, so we're doing.
Um, these just came out when? When did we get these?
I, I'm.
Today?
Maybe, yeah. It's, we haven't had them very long, for sure. We just would like to get them out to the township residents to give them as great a voice as possible in, um, the design of our park facility.
So you gotta.
And I think the park committee had talked about having a return date by December thirty-first.
First of the year.
So, I mean, obviously, if we get in one on, you know, three or four days after our cut, cutoff, it's not gonna, you know, end the world, because it's, the whole purpose is to get as much residents' input into the park design as possible.
And it can be, I mean, you can go in here and make some changes, it's not, it's not installed.
No, that's for sure.
Yeah, we can go in here and put the P O box on there, it's not a problem at all. I don't know, I think it's our P O box, or is it a, is it a smaller one, or just a normal size? It'll be fun.
If they get bags looking out for us, they'll be so happy.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure they'll have them, ready for us, in a, in a basket.
That's right, they'll be happy.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's an easy fix.
And then, of course, we talked about sending it out to our list serve and having it, uh, available on the website, and having paper copies here available at town hall for people that stop in. So, the, the whole goal is to get input from as many, um, people in our township as we can.
And I would suggest making that a, a PDF fillable form, so they can just email it back and we'll have it, instead of having them.
We didn't discuss that.
I don't.
Because that's a different.
I don't know, I just have to look at the format of it, about whether it's fillable or not.
No, it's not.
You can make any, you can make any form fillable.
Right, that's true. But my question would be is, if we do it as a PDF, it needs to be mailed back to?
No, I'm sorry, what, have them email it to?
That's what I'm saying, we need to make that clear too. That would need to be additional information that we need to put this for.
But this is just for the mailing? You can put it on the township website, the global one. And they could print it and mail it, or throw it out, or email.
That's all we care.
Yeah, we can figure out the details.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm trying to make it easier for the residents.
So Julie, you wanna do a roll call now?
You have to re, you stopped your message.
Oh, I didn't need to use that.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I interrupted the process.
Okay, so, what did we change?
But it's not with the billing, just.
The billing, we have.
Just cut off what we made in thinking of.
Okay. So that's what we'll change, the, the billing, we will not be, we would not use our free billing, or?
Just say that if available, wind waste will send it.
Okay, when available, wind waste will send it out on the, on behalf of the township.
Right, okay.
Roll call, Ms. Marion?
Wait, you need a second. You need to state, restate your motion so you get a second.
I moved to post the Etna Township Park Survey on the township website, and to send the list serve and request wind waste included next, if they can, and this, um, of their mailing to be included, if available, on our behalf of the township. Is there a second?
Second.
You're into discussion, roll call, Ms. Marion?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
So we'll be more detailed on that. I moved to authorize myself to sign the Grolikin County Assessment and Assumption Agreement on transfer, for a transfer of ownership of a, of a property located at eighty-nine forty Global Way from exterior partial five Etna Land LLC to the development property at O H LLC as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Is there any ramification, uh, to the township, or is this?
This, no, this is simply an assignment, because there's been a change of ownership.
Julie, Ms. Marion, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Okay, I moved to approve the Ohio Public Employee, um, O P, O P E C dental and life program announced for January first, twenty-twenty-four as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
So it's only three percent, is it three percent each year, or is that?
No, so one side, three percent.
One side, three percent.
One of the twenty-seven blocks in Etna Palat, it's probably.
It's, but it specifically states that it's a two-year rate guarantee until twenty-twenty-six.
And zero percent on the life, three-year, alright.
Roll call, Ms. Marion?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, so over into the out business. I moved.
Yeah, okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Ms. McKee. The, the board may recall, you previously approved the purchase of two movable radar speed signs from a company called Elon City. The prosecutor's office had issues with a number of the terms and conditions in Elon's contract that Elon was not willing to remit. We went through a negotiation process with them. So through Sourcewell, I located All Traffic Solutions. They offer a similar product, and their product is being used in Reynoldsburg. I met with Reynoldsburg's road superintendent and two of its police officers that moved their equipment from place to place. I saw the equipment and the online reports that are available, which I thought that was interesting, that, um, the Elon City, you would have, I would have had to take a laptop to the location and have it connect, um, via, via Bluetooth in order to download the data. And for these, um, it's all cloud-based, and so, um, reports are available, um, through the cloud, and the history and all of the data is collected and maintained, including, like, when a particular road was, or location was, you can schedule, okay, if a resident calls and says, could you put my road on for radar speed? Then, you can just create a list, and you say, if I've got you on the list, you're number seven, or whatever. So I liked the way that was set up. There are no legal issues with the All Traffic Solution terms. So I'm requesting approval of the purchase of the radar signs from All Traffic in the amount of seven thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. This is slightly more than the previous approval for the Elon City equipment, which was six thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars.
And this, when we would do a report to the board, monthly, quarterly, weekly?
Yeah, it might not make, well, I guess I will obviously make a report at the pleasure of the board.
Oh.
From the, um, from a data collection standpoint, I don't know if it makes sense to make a monthly report, or if it's quarterly report, but the reports can be provided to our deputies for them to, like, increase their presence at a certain time of the day, um, so.
I, I do have a question. You said it has a cloud base, is there fees associated with that?
It's all included in the, um, cost that is provided. And in fact, I think that's one reason it's a little bit more expensive, because in comparing the Elon City invoice that we had, there was not a charge for the, um, for the, what I would call the software.
The reason I ask is because in the description on the first one, it says can be upgraded to traffic cloud.
Yeah.
So, it is upgraded to traffic cloud?
It is, at that price, yeah. It's already included.
Does it, where's it say that in the quote?
Well, whoops, let me see.
And then what, what kind of, uh, uh, unit is this? Is this one that mounts on a pole, or traffic pole?
It's like what Reynoldsburg uses, right?
Yeah, well, Reynoldsburg also has one that is, um, mounted on a, um, on a, uh, cart. But these are specifically the ones that are, um, pole-mounted.
Because the only thing I see out here about data is traffic data collection, stores, vehicles, statistics, locally for later analysis. I don't see anything about upgrading to traffic cloud or anything like that.
Just one second, maybe, I'll, I apologize, that is not your mind full, but at least just give me a second.
The consequence of these reported things, they usually have a cell phone attached to, and they transmit through the cell phone the data.
That's.
And so there's, usually a P E every year for the cell phone.
But that's what it says, can be upgraded, I don't see where it says upgrade.
Well, traffic data collection.
Local, local, not in the cloud. I would, I would assume it would say, upgrade your cloud to traffic cloud, so much, or quantity too.
Yeah. They can be servable too, I notice. It's a little bad every year to have that option on.
Just one second, because I don't have that.
These would not be left out very long, would they?
Inflation.
Well, I mean, we wouldn't put it out there permanently, on a site that we'd have to go up.
Move it around.
Right, so we'd move it around, so it can be collected at that time.
By the township does it quite good, they'll, they'll put it in one spot, and I think Bubba can pump a pole in, mount it, move it.
Right, and then you can, they hit that point.
By the township has one that they move on a trailer too, in the neighborhoods.
I like the poles, because they're not as unsightly as the trailers, and probably less dangerous if people hit them. But yeah, that, that'd be my only question, to make sure that this is actually what we're paying for, that it includes that cloud, because I do think that would be a feature, instead of having somebody go out there, because the expense of that employee going out there and downloading, um, it would add up.
What's that thing like?
Bubba, have you seen the installation of those? Is it heavy, is it awkward?
Well, just a single pole, you can just, you know, just drive it to ground.
And then you attach the?
Well, basically like down here in left gene column, you have the solar panel lights, it's basically the car setup.
Yeah, just like that.
Oh, it's got the panel battery?
Yeah, it's all, it's all enclosed, but I can get concrete bases, you know, like if you see a crozier or something, and you park in oxes. You won't move, I mean, if you get a couple of people out there, you can move them.
I just worry about the bases, you have to really level the ground, otherwise it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to pick the telephone pole?
Um.
Another two.
A lot of times, you know, telephone poles.
I mean, can, can we proceed with the approval conditional that includes traffic cloud? And if not, bring it back to the board?
So I'm just printing this for you right now, it has a specific line item for the traffic data collection, stores, vehicle statistics, locally for later analysis. I just didn't have it, I apologize.
But is that local, or usually the cloud is referred to as not local?
I do. Yeah, I thought I had telephoned it in passing. Oh, you have it too, yeah.
Yeah, like I said, that, I don't think the local.
I thought it was in your materials.
Stored locally means stored there, not in the cloud. In the unit. And that's where it says can be upgraded to traffic cloud.
Okay, I, I can clarify that. I know that when I was speaking with the sales, um, associate, she, I asked her specifically if there was a local, um, agency that was using the same unit, and she referred me to Reynoldsburg. And I went out to Reynoldsburg, and I saw how they use it, and the safety director or road superintendent, um, showed me the reports that he can access in. So, based on that, I assumed that what they told me was the same equipment is available in Reynoldsburg, but I can certainly verify that.
Because online, they're talking about a plan.
I'm sorry?
Online, they're talking about a plan, which I would think you would. Well, that's what I'm saying, approve it, and then, I just, if the iCloud is extremely expensive, maybe there's another option that.
Yeah, correct.
So I'm not sure if we wanna purchase it, and then, okay, add it, if it's really expensive.
Well, certainly, we're not gonna, um, purchase it until we clarify that question.
Because as Mr. Johnson indicated, sometimes those iCloud fees can be significant.
They are, they're eight hundred dollars.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if you're, you can, two of them. So.
It's a pleasure of the board on this.
Still, we have a motion on that, I, I moved to amend the motion to.
There was never a motion.
Oh, there's none, okay, so I, I moved to approve the purchase of the All Traffic Solutions as presented for seventy-three ninety-three fifty-nine. Uh, condition that it contains includes the traffic cloud, um, data transmission, uh, with no additional fees.
I'll second.
Roll call again?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Global Way, um, six twenty-nine.
Change, Ms. McKee. Um, when we last spoke about the Global Way six twenty-nine grant reimbursement, Mr. Evans had the good idea of seeking reimbursement of our legal fees since the project came in under budget and there were additional plans available. Our outside legal counsel agrees that it may be possible to have fees for professional services reimbursed. Since that time, Ms. Marion and I have been working together to gather all of the legal invoices, redact all entries that are not related to six twenty-nine, and gather proof of payment. I provided you with the redacted invoices, as well as a draft letter submitting these expenses for reimbursement. I'm requesting approval to submit this supplemental application. I want you to please but note that the six twenty-nine reimburses twenty-five percent of the costs incurred. So in this case, that would be seven thousand nine dollars and seventy-five cents of the total fees incurred, twenty-eight thousand thirty-nine dollars. As best I know, there are no other fees or expenses that can be submitted, and the remainder of the funds will revert back to the state.
Is there a second? Well, I'm sorry, I moved to approve the supplement application for reimbursement for the Global Way six twenty-nine grant for the professional services in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred dollars and seventy-five cents.
That, that amount's not correct.
Yeah, seven thousand.
Seven thousand nine, seven thousand nine dollars and seventy-five cents, sorry, thanks. Um, is there a second?
I'll second.
We need a discussion?
I'd just say, if we, if we get this, this will pay for almost all of the traffic.
Yeah. Alright, roll call, Ms. Marion?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Same. Move on over to the fiscal officer report. I move Resolution twenty-three, ten, twenty-four, oh, two, to approve the purchase orders as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So it looks like you, you added later on this after giving the.
Actually, this is the purchase orders right now.
I'm sorry?
This is the purchase orders.
Right, right.
There was nothing added.
Okay.
Give me a second.
I second.
Okay, roll call?
Just one more.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Okay, I move to ratify payment for the bills as shown on payment listing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please?
What?
I'm sorry, discussion?
Julie, you said the brochures and bricks was removed from here?
It was. There were C I C charges that needed caught.
That's what I was.
So we took both of those that were on the brochures off. And I'll pay those bills minus the C I C next time, and you don't pay the C I Cs.
There, that's exactly what we needed. Thank you. Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Thoughts, comments, any trustees?
I'd just like to say again that I think that these agendas should be released earlier than the day before, to give people and trustees, because I don't know what's on this agenda until the public sees it. So I would request that this be done at least five days prior with cooperation for.
Johnson?
Once again, I'm, I'm not running for reelection, as you know. I think our staff has done an excellent job in supporting what we do here.
I would have to keep to that agenda.
You did.
So move.
I'll second.
Roll call, the German?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.